And we are rolling and streaming.
Great, thank you, everybody. We are back. Hopefully, we're all back. Everybody here? Councilmember McPherson?
I am here.
Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Heller?
Eric.
Councilmember Davis?
I am here.
Okay, we are ready to rock and roll. We are on business item C dash two, review and approve construction work restrictions developed for the conveyance facilities component of the water reclamation facility project. And I'll turn it over again to Mr. Casares or Mr. Collins.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to say a couple of things, and then I'm going to introduce a couple of members of the project team that are going to be giving a presentation and leading the discussion of the work you just mentioned. So
Thank you.
The pipeline alignment alternatives were identified and presented to the public in December of 2018 at the WRF CAC and then subsequently, the recommendation was made to council in a couple of meetings in early 2019, in January and February of 2019. And it became clear from the WRF CAC meeting, when a number of different pipeline alignments were presented, and it became very clear that the east alignment alternatives, the alignments east of Highway one were technically infeasible, or carried significantly higher capital costs, that the recommendation was to build the pipelines west of Highway one. In two different alignments that were looked at, and one on Quintana and one on Embarcadero, we immediately heard from local business owners that were going to be impacted, that they were concerned with the construction. And so soon after, after that process, we began a pretty robust public outreach program, and began speaking with local businesses. I'm going to turn over the presentation, how the results of our public outreach effort and the work that we've been doing over roughly the last year, to Paul Amico. Paul Amico is with Corolo Engineers out of our Fresno office, and has been leading up in overseeing the conveyance facilities portion of the project for about the last year. And then we also have Sarah Rosetto from Katz and Associates, who's a subconsultant to Corolo, as a member of the program team, who leads up our public outreach effort. So with that, I'll pass it off to Paul. And I think I see your screen, so it looks like you're good to go.
Welcome, Paul.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of council and staff in residence Morro Bay. Again, my name is Paul Amico. I'm the lead for the conveyance facilities. And we've got a brief presentation that summarizes our work. Sarah and I have been out speaking with business owners and summarizes our work doing that, and also talks about the traffic handling requirements that we are developing for the bid documents that will be included in that, and as construction documents that the contractor will have to abide by. This, we've had lots of discussion about our schedule tonight, but just wanted to recap advertisement. We're targeting late June, so in about a month, we would go to the street with the construction documents, or the contract in the fall. And that would mean that the contractor would be on board and receive notice to proceed by October, and we would get to meet them in November. And we would have some, some meetings and opportunity for the public to meet the contractor, have some open houses and things, so we can understand what their work program is going to look like. Anticipate, we would start construction in December and be completed in time for the water reclamation facility startup in April of 2022. So again, just wanted to recap that. Before I get into some of the specifics about the traffic handling requirements, I'm going to pass it over to Sarah, so she can cover what we've been, what we've learned, and what we've been doing for the last several months.
Sure. Welcome, Sarah.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, council, and members of the public. My name's Sarah Rosetto, and I've been helping out with the public outreach planning and some of the initial conversations that we've been having with primarily the business community along the pipeline alignments. I wanted to share a little bit about where we've been on the outreach journey so far, and then I'll end with a little bit about what we're planning for actual construction outreach down the road, with a couple of caveats that we're still in the planning phase for some of that. So if there are questions tonight that we don't have answers to, I'll be sure to jot them down, and we can consider them in the planning process. So in terms of what we've done so far, we have met with about, met with and contacted about 80 businesses along the pipeline alignment. So that includes Atascadero Road, Main Street, Quintana, and the South Bay Boulevard end. So what we did, kind of the methodology, was we contacted as many businesses as we could to fill out our contact database, make appointments with as many of the businesses as we could, and then fill in gaps with just popping in and saying hi. But the mission of our contact was to gather information for some of what Paul will be talking about with the traffic control planning. So we wanted to get information from each business, really tailored to business operations, including the busy times of year for businesses, business hours, deliveries, what kind of vehicles, and what kind of schedule the deliveries meant for businesses, parking, whether that be for employees or customers, and then certainly access information, how people physically get to the businesses. So what we heard in all of those meetings was, this is no surprise, but access is a must, that came in loud and clear in pretty much every meeting that we had, that it would be unacceptable to shut the road down, to detour people to the point where they wouldn't be able to access driveways. And that's what we expected, but really, really important for our initial traffic control planning, and what this will look like in terms of the restrictions that are put on the contractor. Several businesses do have large truck deliveries, and by that I mean semi-truck sized deliveries that have large turning radius requirements that will need to be accommodated, and then several driveways that are one ingress and egress. So we mapped all of those out, and I think we have a comprehensive list of any business that has large truck deliveries, or one way in, one way out. And then there are also several car repair shops along the alignment that absolutely require vehicle access. They would never have walk-in customer traffic, and so jotting those areas down as well. On Atascadero Road, we heard some conflicting information with everyone that we met with. So certainly, that it's a heavily trafficked area in the summer, a busiest because of tourist season, with RV parks and motels along there, but then also that it's very busy during the school year with school traffic. So understanding that balance, as we look at the configuration of how the pipelines would be built along Atascadero Road, is really important with those considerations. Along Quintana, we actually went into it thinking that the busiest time of year would be summertime, but really, what we were hearing primarily is that the busiest time of year is the end of the year, so holiday season from roughly November to January. Obviously, people do business along there year round, so that's not exclusive, but it was interesting to hear information that was definitely new, new compared to what we thought. And then we did hear a request for night work, and we did hear a request for a claim process to address loss of business. Paul, want to take it back?
Yep. Well, thank you. So, so I will, I will take, I'll take it here for a little bit, and discuss our traffic handling approach, what, what we expect, or what we're going to expect from the contractor as the pipeline project is constructed. We need to maintain one lane for emergency access and local business traffic. We'll show a couple of diagrams as we walk through the work zones to show how that can be possible in some places and in others. It's going to be very, very challenging. And so that's crafted, that's helped inform our approach for how we're, what we're including in the bid documents for this, for the project. So the other thing, one of the other elements is business access, and when, when the contractor will be permitted to cross driveways, to take any driveways out of service that, because they're physically going to be blocked by a trench, we are going to require that those crossings be constructed outside of business hours, and then, and so our hope is that the contractor would do a lot of that digging in the morning, but we will permit them to work up until 10:00 PM after business hours, because the large number of businesses along Quintana maintain hours between nine and five, or nine and six. And so we feel like we can get some work done outside of those hours, and are going to require that. Atascadero Road, we don't actually know how the contractor is going to be, going to progress their work program. So we'll need to get them on board before we can see what their actual schedule is, and how they're actually going to put the pipeline in. But we think that, that they'll, there's a good chance that they'll start the construction on Atascadero Road at the beginning of the project, because in most pipeline projects, you lay pipe from the, the most downstream portion to the upstream portion. But we'll have to see the contractor's schedule. And, and to respond to the business concerns along Quintana, we won't allow the contractor to construct pipelines between November 1st and January 15th along Quintana and on Main Street, to avoid those busy seasons, that busy season. So as we go through the maps tonight, and we look at the different work zones, and, and some of the handling requirements that we're going to include in the contract documents, I'll use some definitions, and I'll, I'll use these quite a bit, is, is, as we progress. One is the soft road closure. What that means is, a person driving to the, or trying to drive through the site, would see a traffic barricade that would say road close to through traffic. As you can see down below, through traffic is anyone that wants to get through the work zone from one side to the other. We would not, we do not want people cutting through the work zones. It's not safe for the workers. It's not safe for the, for the traveling public. And so we are going to have detour routes that detour traffic around the work zones. And those detours, or those work zones at the major streets will be defined by the soft road closures. A hard road closure is, is the contractor's work zone. This is the limits that the contractor absolutely controls access in these areas. And, and so those are hard road closures. Oh, excuse me. Those are going to be controlled by the contractor. They would have barricades that define those work zones, and a flagger that will actually control any entry into the work zone. And that would mean local business access, and, and then any, any emergency traffic that needs to access to pass through. And then local traffic, we use that term to refer to business traffic and residential or emergency traffic that's, that needs to cross through the work zone. So as we work through these maps, we will be using these terms to describe this. So we will now work through the, the project. This is the Atascadero Road section. We're referring to this as work zone one. As you can see here, if you can see my mouse on the screen, here's the existing treatment facility, and the work zone is defined in blue. This actually is, oh, excuse me, and this is pump station A, what we call pump station A. So this starts the, all the wastewater that flows to this point today will be then pumped up to the new work facility going from this pump station along the pipeline route. This actually, within the construction, the contract documents is defined as multiple work zones. And as you can see, the pipeline route crosses Atascadero Road. One of the first requirements we will place on the contractors that they cannot work, and they have to maintain two-way traffic on Atascadero Road, and access to all these businesses. And so they won't be permitted to, say, work in this work zone here near the treatment plant, and where the pipeline crosses the street simultaneously, because they wouldn't be able to maintain through traffic in those areas. Another requirement is that, that we're placing on the, on the contractor is that they cannot work on Atascadero Road and the bike path simultaneously because of the access to the high school, and, and that would disrupt the, the ability for students to use, to use the bike path now, bike path now to get to the high school. So we're going to try as much as we can to limit the amount of construction that occurs in both places, and to have the contractor progress the work in this direction. One thing I will say is there's a pipe bridge that, where the pipelines cross Morro Creek, they will be permitted to work on that pipe bridge so long as they can keep access to the bike path open while they're doing that, if they're, if they happen to be working elsewhere. So that would be, that's one, that's work zone one, Atascadero Road. As we move further away from Atascadero Road, this is Highway one, Main Street, Quintana Road here, the work zone as it progresses, as the pipeline is progressing this direction, one thing that as we've analyzed the alignment in the street, we've been able to, we've determined that we can maintain two-way traffic on Main Street, and to maintain access to the businesses while we are, while the pipeline is being constructed. Again, any driveways or business access that would be directly impacted by construction, and that would be all of the businesses along this area, in Lemos, and Culligan, and the upholstery shop, those would all be constructed. Those driveway crossings would be constructed outside of business hours. In order to get the pipelines in and out of pump station B, which is located here, that these, this will be, have to be done in halves. So, so one side of the road, the contractor would build, construct the pipelines on one side, and then open traffic backup, and then flip construction, as we would say. So, again, in this area, business traffic maintained, and then we can maintain two-way traffic. One of the, you'll see this diagram a couple of times tonight, and this just shows this area near Lemos. It shows that a typical work zone would, what it looks like with an excavator that digs the pipelines, loaders, and dump trucks that handle the, the excess soil, and the backfill for the pipe trenches. We've estimated that the contractor will need approximately 25 feet in order to accomplish this, and, and, and that they can maintain two-way traffic during construction. Another feature that I'll, I'll highlight here that I'm sure we've covered in the past, but I will reiterate this, is that there are actually four pipelines. Division of drinking water, because of the IPR line and its, its proximity to these wastewater lines, we require a separation where the IPR line is two feet away, and foot higher than these other pipelines. So when I say two feet, that's two feet between the trenches. So what this means is that as the contractor is building this, they will likely have to build this in two passes, where they build these three pipelines first, and then follow with a crew that builds the IPR line after. They may choose to do it differently, and we won't know until we see their work program, but they, but the, the requirements are that the soil between the pipelines is not disturbed. So they won't be able to open up the entire trench all at once, and put all four pipelines in. They'll have to do it in two passes. The other, the other element of the construction program that we would want to highlight is the final paving. Final paving will likely be done after the contractor has laid the pipes. They would lay temporary pavement, and then as they progress the, the project away from that location, they would, they would go, say, a half mile or a quarter mile before they would come back and do the finished paving. And that's to make it more cost effective for their subcontractor to do their paving, subcontractor to do paving. So this is the, the commercial zone between Morro Bay Boulevard and Main Street along Quintana. We spent a considerable amount of time in this area meeting with businesses and trying to understand, better understand the, how the local transportation network is used, what business access requirements there are. We've divided this into six work zones. The area down between the driveway going to the shopping plaza, where Autozone and Fitness Works is located, work zone four, which is immediately in front of that, and then the two work zones between Kennedy Way and Morro Bay Boulevard. In this area, and I'll, I'll go to the work zone diagram, so that we can look at what this work zone looks like. Again, the 25-foot minimum required working area, we have the excavator, the loader. We only have 40 feet between the edge of pavement and the curb in this area. So it's going to be very challenging for the contractor to maintain one-way traffic. But because of the unpaved right-of-way, we believe that they'll be able to, they'll be able to either improve this to make a drivable surface, or somehow accommodate that emergency traffic that goes, that might need to pass through the work zone. But as the, as the pipeline construction is progressing, we will be detouring traffic on the road shown in yellow. And so these, these work zones will be moving as we, as the pipeline construction is, is progressing. So these detours would change as the work progresses. We will have flaggers, we'll require flaggers at the work zones, and, and again, business access being maintained, driveways being constructed, or the pipelines being constructed in front of the driveways outside of working hours. As we've seen the work zone diagrams, again, this is near urgent care, where we have a sidewalk. This area, again, be, going to be very challenging for the contractor to keep traffic going, but it will be a requirement. And pipeline contractors are always very, they're very good at what they do, many of them. And, and so one of the requirements, as we've, as we've put together the bid documents, is that the contractor will be required to hire a licensed traffic engineer, or a qualified traffic control company, to prepare the detailed traffic control plans that would be submitted to the city, that, that detail how traffic is accommodated in these work zones. Our bid documents require, I've put together the series of requirements and traffic handling requirements, and then the contractor would come in with detailed traffic plans, so that they could get encroachment permits and actually perform the work. And, because they know best how they need to accommodate traffic during the, during construction. Those traffic control plans will also include dates for different closures and different detouring routes. Those are submitted to the city, and Caltrans, depending on where the construction is, and, and then approved before any work is performed. So the next set of work zones we're going to look at here, between Morro Bay Boulevard and, and La Loma Avenue, again, four work zones. The crossing of the roundabout is actually trenchless, so at no time will the roundabout itself be closed. The receiving pit for that trenchless crossing is located here on Las Tunas. And so there will be some, there will be some activity there as that, as that tunnel is being constructed with the pipelines in it. And we believe that, that it will be constructed in this direction from the, from the north side of the roundabout over to the south side. But again, until we see the contractor's work program, we're not going to know exactly how they're going to progress that work. But we are requiring them to, once that pit is, is constructed, that they get traffic going back in this as quickly as they can while that tunneling operation is going on. As the work progresses in this direction, work zone eight, nine, and 10, as you can see, the detour routes around each one of these work zones. And we, we will maintain access to all these businesses during construction. One-way traffic for, for local and emergency traffic in this area. And again, traffic being detoured on the yellow streets, as we've seen. Last work zones, South Bay Boulevard, Highway one, the bottom part of Quintana, as it comes down to South Bay Boulevard. Different work zones here to accommodate the, the traffic from the church and the funeral home in this area. And then, so depending on where the pipeline is, is being constructed, people that use these facilities that want to visit, that, that come to these, these areas will have to access it either from Morro Bay Boulevard to South Bay Boulevard, depending on where the construction is. So we'll have construction notices that, that, and signage that direct traffic in these areas as the work is progressed. On South Bay Boulevard, both work zone 13 and 14, because the traffic control will be in Caltrans right-of-way, it'll be, those, those traffic control plans will have to be submitted to Caltrans, and for, for signage, and traffic handling for the, the Highway one ramps, and, and also to the city, because these are city roads. And we've, we've also met with the operator of the, the care facility here on Teresa Drive. And this area has to be maintained 24/7 emergency access. And so we'll be working closely with the contractor to accommodate that traffic as this, as this work is being performed. And then the work site is, is here. So with that, I will turn this back over to Sarah to talk about actual construction outreach.
Okay, so just a couple of slides, talking about what we expect at this time in terms of communication during construction. I should say, between now and construction, which would be estimated to start in the fall, we would put together a construction outreach plan in much more definition than is included here. And we would continue having some, or scheduling some, some key meetings to define what coordination will look like during construction. And entities that that would include are solid waste, USPS, transportation, some of the other organizations that require use of the right-of-way, and would need to be informed well in advance of construction. So we could, we could make sure everything's streamlined when that time comes. But at this point, we see the construction outreach approach, including both comprehensive notifications with, with multiple different methods, mail, hard copy notifications in the form of door hangers, media communication in the form of, of traffic advisories, and then certainly online communication in the form of eBlast website updates, and then coordination with traffic apps like Google Maps, to make sure that our, our work zones are actually indicated where people are using their phones to get through. So they would be detoured correctly, and instead of getting frustrated at our enclosure. And then certainly, using meetings and field visits, as we've already done. I have found it to just be such a joy to get to know the business owners through this initial process, and through working with the Chamber. They've been so collaborative, and it's, it's really been wonderful. So I hope we can continue that, leading to construction and through construction with one-on-one business meetings and business visits, both to communicate in advance what's coming, but also if something goes wrong, or something, there's a surprise in the field, using those field visits as a way to have face-to-face communication when, when we can do that again in the future. Group meetings, like I mentioned, the Chamber, we've met with them multiple times about this approach, and some of the needs of the business community. And so keeping that door open to more collaboration and communication. Availability sessions are sort of like office hours, where the construction manager may be available to, you know, answer questions on a regularly scheduled window of time. And then community meetings during specific construction milestones, when we have something bigger to report. And then just to dive in a bit on the notification process, that was mentioned on the previous slide with the door hangers. Paul and I have actually honed this approach on previous large diameter pipeline projects together, and found that it sort of is a sweet spot of when people can consume a notification. So if you're, if you're, you know, putting a door hanger out too far in advance, it's highly likely that people will forget about what's included on the notice, and it'll be not very effective in actually communicating about especially something as, as serious as detour road closure. So starting this process with a one-on-one meeting or business visit in advance of a section of work noted on those maps as the work zones, followed by a door hanger notification one week in advance of a driveway crossing, followed by a 24-hour one week in advance of a driveway crossing, followed by a 24-hour in advance notification, and then followed lastly with a street resurfacing notification to say, you know, this is what you can expect in terms of the final paving and the road resurfacing. As Paul mentioned with the four pipelines, we will have to tailor that a little bit further in terms of when those notifications would be going out. So we're still putting some thought into that and what that would look like with the potential of three pipelines being constructed at once, followed by the one separately. So more to come on that. And then in working with the Chamber, we have a lot of opportunity to collaborate on some, you know, interesting and more creative solutions potentially. So something we've talked about is developing a war chest guide that would basically be how to prepare for this, how to market yourself, and plan ahead for the next six months. Some of these ideas came up in discussion before these COVID times. So I see that actually some of this is even more important now in really using the next six months to make sure that businesses are prepared for this. Developing signage, which would clearly define the detour routes, and this might be above and beyond what would be included in typical traffic control plan with just kind of the black and yellow signs. So seeing, you know, what flexibility we might have to make signage a little bit more public-friendly. Providing information to the Chamber and business marketing materials. So whether that be prepackaged information for businesses to use in their own newsletters or websites, providing information for employee communications that would be more along the lines of something that they can just print out and post. And then figuring out some creative solutions both before and during construction. Part of the uniqueness of pipeline construction and pipeline construction communication is that it has to be very dynamic. The work zones are constantly moving. And so each day is really a new audience of who we need to be keeping informed. So that's definitely top of mind for me. And then a few things that have come up in discussions with city manager and this team in terms of commitments that I think everyone's comfortable making at this time. The importance of finding creative solutions to solving issues, being as proactive as we can be, but also being responsive as we get into construction. Partnering with the contractor to make sure that they understand the community needs and that we're able to do sort of a download of everything we've learned so far when there is a contractor on board, but also making sure that they're fully understanding the need and the expectation that they're a good neighbor. Communicating proactively and clearly about what to expect. Like I said, pipeline construction is very dynamic, but that's on us to stay on top of in our communications. And then it is a balancing act of public access, public and construction crew safety and construction efficiency. And so using kind of those three things as a basis for decision-making, even small decisions in the field, using those three things as guidance. So with that, I think there's, Paul, one more slide. Yep. We have developed three contact channels, formal contact channels for the public at this time. So there's officially a Morro Bay email address, workinfo@morobayca.gov. I monitor that email address, and we are responding to anyone who contacts the email address within one business day. We have a phone line set up, 877-MORRO-BAY-H2O. It's a voicemail box, but it also does go directly to me and a few of the project team members for response and logging. And then our website is the repository for project information, construction notices as we have them, and there's also a contact form on the website. So the website is a work in progress. We are uploading a lot of materials and resources there, project documents. So yeah, more to come on that. But that's where we are in our planning.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Well, so that's the end of our presentation. We can open it for questions now. I don't know if you want me to leave the presentation up or if we need to look at any of the other maps, but just let me know and I'll reshare my screen if you want.
You can take it down, Paul. I'm gonna just have to interrupt you for one moment. Thank you for the presentation. Counsel, can I entertain a moment, a motion, excuse me, to go beyond 9:30?
I move we go beyond 9:30 to a time uncertain.
For a second?
I second that.
Okay, okay. Motion by Councilmember McPherson to go beyond 9:30 time uncertain, second by Councilmember Heller. Any discussion? If not, a rule call vote, please.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
And they are heading.
Yes, thank you. And Sarah and Paul, thank you. Sorry to interrupt your flow there. Just didn't want to cut you off and have to end the meeting without going past 9:30 is our hard stop time. So with that, a great presentation, appreciate it very much. And I'm going to open it up for council questions. Start, if I could, with Councilmember Davis, sir. Any questions for the group?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you so much for being thorough. And I'm tickled that you had the Chamber working with you. I think that's a great working group. I just have a couple of questions. One is particularly for the Quintana section between Main Street and the roundabout, work zones three, four, five, and six, will you be working on those simultaneously? Or will they be done discreetly, one section at a time, finish up before you move on?
So as much as possible, we will, one of the general requirements we have is that the contractor cannot occupy multiple work zones simultaneously without prior approval. So they'll have to ask, you know, they'll have to submit traffic plans to the city for approval and work with the construction manager and have a good reason why they would, why they would need to work in multiple work zones simultaneously. That said, there is an opportunity with work zone four, which is the work zone immediately in front of the shopping plaza with Autozone and Fitness Works and other businesses there, where they could use that as an area where they could work. And because this is fusible pipe, they're going to need a large area to fuse the pipes so that they can go install it. So what we may do is allow them to use that as a work zone, to fuse pipe when they're working in adjacent work zones, but only if they can maintain traffic through there. So we will have them submit traffic plans that would accommodate that traffic if they choose to do it that way. We don't know if that's what they're going to do yet, but we, the current requirement is that they can't work in multiple work zones simultaneously. They have to complete work in one before they move on to the next.
Okay. And then you talked about using media outlets to communicate specific day-to-day traffic conditions. Have you contacted our community radio station, 97.3 The Rock, and made arrangements with them to carry those daily bulletins?
We have not yet, but there's definitely an opportunity for that. And I think that would be, especially for commuters, probably a very effective method for getting the word out.
Okay. That's all the questions that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller, sir, any questions?
Okay, yes. Thank you. I appreciate the plan. It looks great. So if I understand it correctly, you're going to have a, this plan or something similar to it in the, in the bid documents, expressed maybe as a plan and also something in the specifications? Or is it just going to be a plan? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah. So we have, so the designers included a number of plan sheets within the, within the actual set of drawings that describe the general traffic handling requirements, requirements like maintaining one-way traffic for emergency vehicles, maintaining access for public services like garbage collection and other things. So those requirements are spelled out in general in those plans. And then specifically for each work zone, we call out specific businesses with large truck traffic that the contractor would have to accommodate, not just during construction, while they're right in front of that business, but also when they're working in adjacent work zones. So on each one of those work zones, we have, we call them stages within the traffic handling requirements in the plans that describe specific requirements for those stages in those various work zones.
Okay. And so there will be nothing in specifications addressing the requirements?
The specifications, the general, the front end of the specifications have general requirements for how the permits are obtained and what they have to, and what requirements they have. For instance, the, we call them the MUTCD standards that they have to, that the traffic handling, or the traffic control plans will have to comply with, how they get an encroachment permit and so on. So it's both the plans and the specs. But the plans themselves have the specific requirements for traffic handling.
Okay. So the way it would go, I guess, is you'd award it to, award the contractor to the lowest qualified bidder, sign them up, and then they work on the, they retain a traffic control engineer, put together plans, submit it to you for review. Is that right?
They submit it to the city. They submit that to the city, yeah, specific traffic control plans. So there's a distinction that we're sort of making, even though we call all this traffic control and how traffic control, within the plans, we call them traffic handling requirements. Because one thing that we don't have, we don't have the timing for when the work zones will be in place. They have to figure out the specific signage and so on. And so in order to get the permit to install the pipes from the city and from Caltrans, they have to submit traffic control plans and get those approved so that the city can do those through the normal review channels.
Okay. And then, once you get those plans approved and the work starts, obviously the contractor's going to want to get as much done as quickly as he can to make more profit. What kind of enforcement mechanism is in place if you have kind of a rogue contractor who's not really paying much attention to the approved plans?
Well, so we're going to have a construction inspection team and construction management team that is there to enforce the requirements and the specifications. And so there's, you know, everything up to and including work stoppage if they don't comply with the, with both the, if they don't comply with the requirements and specifications. So the traffic control plans carry that same, they carry that same authority, which means if they don't comply with those plans, then they can be shut down. And that's a very, very clear, that's very clear when, when they're violating the specifications. There's no rubbery area on that.
So what authority do you have to shut them down?
They, well, it's a, it's a contract and the, and approved traffic control plan. Those, they can, it's a, the encroachment permit, the traffic control plan is encroachment permit and the ability for them to cut the street in the public right-of-way. If they don't comply and the construction manager tells them to stop work, they have to stop work.
Okay. So there are no, there are no fines or liquidated damages or anything like that associated with this contract normally? Is that right?
Not, well, there would be, the, those are two different things. Liquidated damages are for, you know, for not meeting the schedule, but there are no fines or other requirements for not, for not complying with the traffic control plan. What, the power we have is that we can stop their work. And then they have overhead that they have to pay and no revenue coming in at that point.
Would you anticipate if, any need for our police department to do any enforcement? Or will all this be handled by your construction managers?
It'll all be handled by construction managers and construction inspectors.
We're running on fumes in the police department right now. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Heller. Let's go to Councilmember McPherson, please.
Thank you. Some of my questions have already been answered, so I appreciate that. I just have a couple more. You talk about this separate construction manager and a construction inspector. Are these Corolla employees?
I believe at this time that's our approach. Eric, did you want to chime in on that?
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, so the, we are currently not under contract to provide construction management services for the pipelines that will be coming to council and for the amendment for the upcoming fiscal year. But yeah, they would be Corolla employees. We have the staff identified, a team, construction managers, resident engineers, and inspectors. And depending on the timing of the work, we have multiple inspection positions, multiple, multiple inspectors that can flex on and off the project as needed during times when more than one inspector is required.
Okay. And so typically on a project like this, which I'm, you know, I mean, I have certainly been affected by them, but I'm not familiar with how they're done, approximately how much work is done in a given day? I mean, how much of the street do you tear up at one point in time during a stage? Because you're not going to tear up the whole stage at one time. It's going to be done in sections, correct?
That's correct. This, this project's a little unique in, in a couple of different aspects. One is the fact that there are multiple pipelines and that, and not just that there are multiple pipelines, but there are multiple pipelines that need to be installed in two passes, if you will. And so that introduces an interesting twist for the, for being able to say how many feet per day can the contractor get in. The other thing is that the pipe material that's being utilized is a, is a fusible material. So it's going to be, so what the contractor will, will want to do is to fuse as much pipe as they can and get that in the ground in one, in one attempt, if you will, right? So they will dig the trench, as much trench as we, as they can with straight runs of pipe, then put the pipes in and then backfill the trench. So it's not like a normal, what we would call segmental pipeline project where it's 20 or 40-foot sections of pipe and they can, they can dig the trench, you know, they can open up 60 feet of trench, put in 40 feet of pipe and can, and backfill and just make it like a moving train. This is going to be a little different because of the fusible pipe material that's been specified for the project. So as they, as they progress the work, what will really control the pace of their work are a couple of different things. One is the number of fittings that they have to put on the pipeline. The other is the number of driveways that they have to cross. And then the third thing will be crossing utilities. So if there are sections of the pipe, the pipeline alignment that don't have a lot of crossing utilities, don't have a lot of driveways, and are long straight runs of pipe, they can get that done very quickly. In areas where you might have more crossing utilities or there's more congestion in terms of driveways and different things that would slow them down. So to, it's difficult to answer that question until we see the contractor's schedule and we see what their work program is going to look like. But what I can say is that, say in work zone four, which is the area right in front of the shopping plaza with Fitness Works and Autozone, that'll go very quickly. That should go very quickly. It's a long straight run of pipe, there's no crossing utilities, and there's no driveways really in that location that are, and not a lot of businesses that'll impact them. But the area just down the road from that, a lot of driveways, a lot of businesses, a lot of traffic handling that might go a little slower.
Okay.
I wish it was a more straightforward answer to give for that, but it's just going to vary.
Yeah, you know, you've talked about all the variables that make it, you know, different. So do you think that the engineer's estimate for the cost of the pipeline projects takes, do they take all of these various issues into account in coming up with the engineer's estimate for the cost?
They do. We've, I've looked under the hood, if you will, on their estimate and very, very thorough, very detailed, and have taken into consideration estimated production rates and how those vary along the, along the alignment based on the different variables that I talked about.
Okay. And I don't know if you've seen the email that we received from Ms. Winholz, but if you could address her concerns, I don't have them in front of me, but hopefully Eric does if you don't.
I'm scrambling to find those. I don't believe that I have those.
Read them one by one?
Sure. Would you? Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Contact with Quintana businesses is loosely defined. That is leaving a pamphlet and walking away with not, with no frig or follow-up is not engaging in meaningful contact. Did you see the budget amount that went towards this effort? All right. So most of our business contact to this point has been face-to-face meetings where we have sat down with anyone who was willing to meet with us. There were still many businesses where we did just drop off information, and we have that noted as well. And then I guess the follow-up And then I guess the follow-up to that is at, at this point, we've done kind of our first round, but it doesn't mean that we're not going to be back to engage them further as we get closer. And to Paul's point of getting the contractor on board, really understanding the schedule and how the work would be progressed will further define the information that is included in future communication.
Okay. Do you have any other issues there?
Oh, yes, more, a few more. The residential neighborhoods in South Morro Bay will be contending not only with their inability to get in and out, but heavy extra traffic for months. I assume this will include semi-trucks and public buses. What, what will be the extensive outreach and who has contacted the RTA? So the Transit Authority is on our list for these agency meetings, coordination meetings that we have yet to have. So that is one of several. And the neighborhoods are absolutely included in the outreach approach up to this point, or what we included tonight was heavily focused on the, the business outreach. But the notifications and signage absolutely apply to the neighborhoods and, and residential areas as well. Okay. Number three, I did not see, but maybe I overlooked, any contact with the three residential mobile home parks on Quintana. Same there. We haven't met with them yet, but the residential communities are definitely an important part of the outreach approach. Just what we focused on up to this point was really the information gathering mission from the businesses that had really unique needs versus more traditional residential impacts like access or noise. Number four, what outreach, if any, will be given to Los Osos? Half of Los Osos commuter traffic will use Highway One and South Bay Boulevard. So yes, I think there, there are broader outreach tactics, not, not along the lines of the notification approach, but more along the lines of the media, local media, you know, city to city coordination and some of the, the radio or signage type of tactics that were mentioned earlier that would help get the word out to areas outside of Morro Bay.
We will not depend on the county to contact Los Osos. We will, we will do that to try to figure out the best way to get to their, to get the information out. And then there will also be signage as well. We'll have to take that into account in the traffic control plans.
And then number five, the WRF started construction without a traffic plan and I haven't seen one. Will the contract for the pipelines and lift stations produce a timely traffic plan?
Yes, absolutely. The, that's tied to their encroachment permit. They won't be able to implement any work zones at all without a traffic control plan because it's in the public right of way.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. And Councilmember Addis, please. Any questions?
Just one, is there any shift or do you see any shifts coming given COVID and just any changes and how, how is COVID being approached in terms of worker safety?
So I haven't, I haven't been, I'm, I'm not currently working on any construction projects myself. As Eric indicated earlier, we have a construction manager for the WRF project. But I, so Eric, do you want to take that one or?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to the, I can speak to the WRF. There's a couple of things that we've implemented on the WRF project itself that we would be looking to do for, for the pipeline project as well. It's a little bit of a different relationship between our current construction oversight folks on the WRF as a design build versus our construction managers on a design bid build. But one of the things we, we did do with the WRF and we're going to make the, the contractor do is they have to submit a health and safety plan, a contractor health and safety plan. And we will make sure that that includes provisions for COVID in accordance with the, the local requirements from, from the county. So that's something, as I mentioned, that initially we had a, an illness and injury prevention program or plan from the design bill team, and we made them go back and update that because of the COVID happened after them developing that plan.
Are there any shifts in the timelines with road closures, given the, what's happened with COVID? Like any shifts in terms of the work proceeding as it has? I know construction stayed as essential workers basically, but I know there's been issues with supply chains or just any other stuff related to that that you foresee disrupting the timeline?
Yeah, we haven't seen, we haven't seen a lot happening in term, in the way of delays as, as it relates to COVID for materials and those kinds of things. At least that's the way that we've been proceeding on the work project. Haven't noticed anything. Haven't heard much from some of the other projects we have going, going around in the company. One of the things we have considered is, you know, modifying some contract language to make sure that the contractors are, they understand that this is a kind of a changing situation and they need to walk into that, understanding that. Now, I think that standard front-end documents are, handle that pretty well already. So kind of made the decision as a company not to modify our documents to specifically call out COVID because it is something that, it's an existing condition and, and contractor should be aware and should understand that. So yeah, but haven't heard a lot of, haven't heard a lot of supply chain delays or those kinds of things as of yet.
So we should relatively speaking, we should be able to count on the timelines as this?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't anticipate right now anything differently unless there's something very specific to like the fusible PVC pipe or the HDP, HPE pipe we might get. I mean, that could be something that, that deals or that plays into the contractor's selection of the pipe material, but we are leading it up to those two options theoretically. And there could be something related to COVID that impacts the availability or cost of one of those. But yeah, like I said, I haven't heard very much in the way of, of delays either from jurisdictions delaying construction or just being physically being, being able to get the materials.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I can speak to that from the outreach perspective too, because our plans likely will change if we can't meet in person with businesses or residents. So part of the information gathering mission over the last few months was to complete our contact database for everyone along the alignment. So I'm feeling really good about that and we do have email addresses for a lot of the businesses and as many phone numbers as possible. So I think we'll be able to be pretty nimble in changing course if it requires, you know, more phone outreach rather than in person.
Great. Thank you. That, that's it for me.
Okay. Thank you. Paul and Sarah, thank you so much. Just a couple of questions. I assume that you've had extensive meetings with the high school and they do, as I believe they will continue to do, have an open campus during the noon hour or lunchtime. And there are a significant number of young people that drive out of there and head over to Atascadero, believe it or not, to In-N-Out Burger, among other places. What specific plans do you have to communicate not only to administration but to students?
Hmm. That's a good question. They, they have a lot of unique needs at the high school, considering all of the construction that they have on site as well. So I think their students have been really working around and changing kind of course in terms of where they've been parking along the road, even with their own construction. So I think it's fitting our information into the channels that they already have. They have text notifications to both students and parents and then a weekly newsletter. And I think those two methods, because they're already used to receiving information that way, are going to need to be factored into our approach. I also think we, well, this was requested by the principal, but us, a standing meeting with them to make sure that they're, when we're at that end of the job, that, you know, we're in weekly or regular coordination with them about what to expect, just because they do have such a high volume of traffic and such a reliance on Atascadero Road for bicycle traffic and street parking.
Perhaps every eight minutes. I think that's the attention span for at least my grandchildren that are there. I just think that that would be very important to, to make sure that that communication is consistent and that you reach out with the high school to an even greater degree to make sure that the young people get the message. The other question I had had to do with noise and the city ordinance, I know you have hours of operation, but we do have an ordinance that relates to noise. Do we anticipate any exceedances or issues associated with that?
We don't, we don't currently, well, we don't, no, we don't anticipate it. The key there will be just, you know, controlling the work hours. The, the noise ordinance is pretty specific about under what conditions you would be able, the contractor would be able to work outside of what we would deem normal working hours. So in those specific areas, we'll be working closely with the contractor on, on their activities to make sure that when they are adjacent to residences, they are being respectful and mindful of where they are. There are certainly safety features on their equipment that cannot be disabled, like backup beepers and things like that. That just comes with the, that's just the nature of construction. But they will be required to, to abide by the requirements of the noise ordinance. And then any, any activity or any construction work that's done as we cross driveways, we're going to be working very closely with them on that work program so we can understand it, so we can communicate with affected parties, communicate with nearby residents and neighbors and, and make sure that we're, we're being a good and respectful neighbor as much as we can while we're digging up the street.
Good. Thanks for that. My last question is, I assume that this plan has not been shared with business owners pending approval. What's the plan to unveil this or to get maybe even further input from businesses or other entities that might be involved with regard to the specific plan?
So the, so there is a couple of different layers there. The, the first thing is this, this presentation that we've, we've, there's been variations or different versions of it that we've shared with the chamber and it's evolved based on discussions with business owners and discussions with the chamber. And so we, we did get some input and actually, and made some adjustments to our approach based on input that we had heard as we did those discussions. In terms of the specific traffic control plans, there are, you know, there are requirements that, there's a manual of traffic handling that the traffic engineers will, will have to follow in order to do the, to do the specific plans. There are a lot of traffic laws that they have to abide by, certain things and just general good practice. So unfortunately, many of those traffic plans are, are going to be approved in the normal city channels and then, and that has to do with the safety of the contractor's workers and also the safety of the traveling public. So those will be approved through normal city channels and then implemented. And then it's our job to communicate those requirements to local business owners with the, with the guidelines that we've been developing through the design process. So that's, that's the, that's the best we can do is most of the time when it comes to the specific traffic control plan, the signage and so on, we, we will follow the, the manuals, the standard practice and the requirements of the various laws and requirements for traffic handle.
Great. Thank you both. We're going to go ahead and open it up to public comment. Zeke, public comment is now available for item C dash two. Do we have anybody in the queue, sir?
Betty Winholtz.
Welcome, Betty. Do we have Ms. Winholtz on the line?
I enabled her talk, but she's not unmuting her mic.
Sorry. I couldn't find, thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for asking my questions that I submitted earlier today. Just a few follow-ups, if you don't mind. Is the budget that was listed for outreach, is that how much has been spent up to this point? Or is that for the total two years? Another question would be, so it sounds like there'll be way more interaction between businesses and that there'll be more one-on-one coming up, hopefully around the roundabout as well as along the streets. And of course, I'm particularly concerned about the mobile home parks because they only have one in a, one place. It's both the Ingress and Egress. So protecting those driveways is pretty important. The follow-up to contacting Los Osos and the CSD, I'm, I'm glad to hear that you'll try to make personal contact with them. And I think that's going to be really important because they're the heavy users of South Bay. They're the ones that make traffic heavy the closest to the WRF site, though they will be coming through the state parks and there's going to have to be coordination through state parks. I'm wondering if you've contacted them yet or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Zeke, next?
John Weiss.
John, welcome.
You have to, there you go.
Thank you, citizens, honorable mayor and council and staff. My name is John Weiss and I'm a homeowner and business owner. I happen to have a business on Quintana Road. I have had the pleasure of meeting both Paul and Sarah. Very impressed with, with both of them. I give them high marks for their, their outreach. I would also mention that I had the opportunity a second time to meet with them to, at City Hall. And I want to also comment that, as I recall, Scott Collins popped in when he should have been home, but I think that's just the dedication of our city manager. My concern is obviously what I've described over and over again, the impact it's going to have on the businesses even under the best conditions. And unfortunately, I realize this is what the city has decided, so it is what we will have to live with and hopefully it will not result in businesses going under. I am concerned and maybe Paul has an answer to the impact to the coffee shop that's at the, adjacent to the roundabout because it looks like the pipe goes right underneath the coffee shop. And if you look at the coffee shop, it's not a very large building. So I'm, I am concerned for them. And I'm not sure on the dates. I've heard that they'll start in December and then I've also heard no work between November through January or February. So I'm not, I'm not clear on what the, the timing of the pipeline project will be. And I thank you very much. And of course, I know that both Paul and Sarah have access to both my phone and cell phones or cell phone and email. So welcome your, any questions you might have so that we can make this smooth as possible. Thank you very much. That's my comments.
Thanks, John. Next public comment, Zeke?
Next speaker, you're online. Well, it shows that we're connected, but I don't know if they're hearing us.
Go to the next one, Zeke, and then maybe we can get.
Well, we don't have any more with their hands raised.
Okay. So do you, is, do they appear to be muted?
No, they don't. They appear to be connected.
Is there a public comment? Anybody on the line?
Nope.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll close public comment and. Okay, hearing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Again, Paul and Sarah, thank you so much for the great presentation. Just a couple of further questions that I might ask you to answer. Betty had a question with regard to the budget for outreach. How much has been spent? And could you comment on that?
Sure. Eric, would you mind chiming in on the duration of the contract?
Yeah, I can, I can say, so since the, since we came on board as program manager, so little over two years, we spent right around $250,000. That's what I could see from immediately looking at the information that I've got in front of me. So something along those lines. And that's not specific to, I don't have that broken out by what's been done along Quintana. That includes things like the website, other public outreach in terms of press releases, all, all, all in everything. And that's between both cats and Corolla staff. I don't have a specific breakdown for the outreach on Quintana, but we could, we could figure that out. Okay, thank you. And Sarah, have we contacted state parks with regard to the project? Or do we have a plan to do that?
I have not. I will be sure that they are on our contact list, but I believe there's been other project coordination with them, Eric.
Um, yeah, I don't recall off the top of my head if we've done anything specific with, with state parks along with the pipelines. Might have been some conversation with them during the environmental document or comments on the environmental document, but I don't recall.
All right.
Okay, so I'm assuming you're making notes about that. A question about the coffee, Morro Bay Coffee and impact. Is there an issue with piping there, Paul?
I can take that one. That's, that's a schematic, you know, that was a schematic. That line does not necessarily represent the exact pipeline alignment. We are, the pipeline is, is in a, it's a trenchless crossing at that point and it's, it's far enough, it's far away from that, that structure. In fact, the, you know, the specific alignment that was selected and designed took that into account. And there was, the geotechnical investigation looked at that area. There were several borings taken in that area to make sure that we don't impact that structure with any sort of settlement. So it's well out of the, it's well away from the coffee shop. The other issue that they'll experience is just access during construction while, while Las Tunas is under construction and before the pipeline turns and goes on to Quintana. We've in fact had several coffees there just so we could really get the good, the lay of the land and make sure that we understood what the access issues were. And so it looks like their access will not be heavily impacted even while Las Tunas is under construction. Unfortunately, to, to leave from the backside, not the entrance right off the roundabout for the backside, that, that traffic would have to detour around that while Las Tunas is under construction. But that driveway, there is a driveway on the roundabout that won't be impacted by construction because that's a trenchless crossing.
Great. And then John Weiss had a question about the, the timeline, and that's the first slide that you showed. You may just want to just briefly review it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, you want me to pull the slide up again or?
Not necessarily. If you can read it or?
No, it's, we, this isn't anticipated. So the, the schedule restriction around mid-November to, or November to January 15th, I think is what we had said in that, which is not, no work during November and December. That is specific to Main Street and Quintana. There's plenty of other work that can be done. There's plenty of other pipeline, you know, Atascadero Road could be constructed at that time. There's, there are, you know, several thousand feet of pipe along the bike path that can be structured, constructed at that time. So the contractor will just, just build their work program around that schedule restriction. And when we say that they can't build during November and December, that would not include the trenchless crossing. So they can, they can do the trenchless crossing, the roundabout during that timeframe if they wanted. It's just no open construction, no disruption of driveways or tearing up of streets between Main Street and Morro Bay Boulevard between in November 1st and January 15th.
Great, thank you. And that, that was all the questions that I had from public comment. With that, I'll bring it back to council and entertain a motion and, and/or discussion.
I move that we approve the construction work restrictions that have been developed for construction of the conveyance facilities component of the water reclamation facility project.
Second.
So we have a motion by council member McPherson to approve the construction work restrictions that have been developed for the construction of the conveyance facilities component of the WRF, second by council member Heller. Any discussion?
I have a couple of things, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
One other entity you might want to contact is the Morro Bay Golf Course, which is owned and operated by the county. There's a road that runs right to the golf course that is used heavily by locals. And it may be impacted when you start working around that Quintana, South Bay Boulevard location. So I think it's important that they be in the loop. And the other thing I do suggest that you include a traffic control specification in the bid documents. That's it for me. Thank you.
Great comments. Thank you for that. I appreciate that, especially that, that roadway. I forgot about that. Heavily, heavily used. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, council member Davis.
Yes. I would just like to emphasize a requirement that we coordinate with our community radio station to provide live, real-time traffic updates during the construction period.
Excellent. Appreciate that. Any other comments or discussion?
I just wanted to say that, you know, we know that this project is going to be very disruptive to our local businesses and our residents. And we understand that they're going to be upset. And, you know, I don't want to minimize that fact, but I do think that this team has really done an admirable job of taking into consideration the needs and desires of our businesses and the residents who need to access during construction. So I just want to thank the team for what to me looks like a very detailed plan. So thank you.
Thank you, council member McPherson. I'll, I'll echo that. And I, I'll tell you the priorities, the way I see them are number one, safety, and number two, minimal business disruption for businesses. I know that has been significantly discussed and is a concern that a number of businesses have raised. And I think the plan adequately addresses both of those, but I want to emphasize close contact with not only school administration, but also the students that leave campus during lunchtime. I think that's extremely important, concerned about their safety and well-being as well. Any other comments? If not, roll call vote, please.
No, sir, no public comments.
No, I meant comments from council. Thank you, Zeke. Roll call vote.
Council member McPherson?
Yes.
Council member Heller?
Yes.
Council member Addis?
Yes.
Council member Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes. Thank you, Paul and Sarah. Appreciate it very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead and announce the, the vote.
Motion Carrie Sivoe.
Thank you. Paul and Sarah, thank you for an excellent presentation. Looking forward to hearing back from you during the process and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, that brings us to item C three, introduction of ordinance number 633 to amend chapter 5.5, Commercial Cannabis Operations Regulatory Program of Title V of Morro Bay Municipal Code to permit certain adult-use commercial cannabis uses, including retail sales, deliveries, and wholesale distributor, and authorized community development directory to issue administrative regulations and general discussion and potential directions to staff on authorized commercial cannabis operations. And I'll turn it over to our esteemed city attorney, Chris Niermeyer.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. As the mayor just aptly summarized, the item before the council now is to amend the current chapter 5.50 of the Morro Bay Code to allow the two current medical cannabis retail shops to also sell adult use and to provide administrative regulatory authority to the community development director. I'll try to make this quick. I know it's late into the evening. In short, the fiscal impact, the proposed ordinance would have on the anticipated tax revenues from medical cannabis sales. Those are estimated at anywhere from $25,000 to $225,000 for just medical sales. Allowing adult-use sales should increase the total revenue to the city by two to three percent, I mean, two to, a factor of two to three, so 200 to 300%. If the retailers do very well, it could go up to 400% or higher. So that means that the revenues of the city would go from $50,000 to $675,000. Keep in mind that these are estimates and we don't know for sure until the stores open. I can say that I reached out to the Grover Beach city attorney and the finance department over there said that they're expecting for this fiscal year to generate about $950,000 in revenues to the city from their cannabis operations. And they're expecting the next fiscal year for it to be up to $1.3 million. They currently allow four retail stores and they also allow manufacturing, testing, and indoor cultivation. So that number is for more than just retail. As a matter of quick background, in 2016, California voters approved adult-use cannabis operations in the state. City passed ordinance 612 shortly thereafter. It allows two medical retail stores. After thorough and very detailed process, two medical permits were issued to two dispensaries to operate in town. They should be opening their doors in four to five months. And so the question is, should council allow them to also sell adult-use cannabis? On May 7th, the council cannabis subcommittee met. That is council members McPherson, Davis, and also includes the city manager, community development director, Scott Graham, the fire chief, and the police chief. And the recommendation from the subcommittee was to pass this ordinance, which will allow the current permittees to also do retail sales for adult-use cannabis. Also to provide administrative regulatory authority to Scott Graham. The ordinance in existence already contemplates that there might be that authority provided to the community development director. What this does is it allows the community development director to either interpret or implement the code through some written guidelines if need be, short of having to do another ordinance amendment. It's not to rewrite the code, but when businesses open up, sometimes issues occur that weren't anticipated until they actually opened. And so this would provide more flexibility to the city. If council does not want to do that, then we could come back with resolutions or ordinance amendments down the road if there's a need to implement and interpret the code specifically. So that's the ordinance amendment. And then also, the cannabis subcommittee put on the table for discussion amongst the committee members whether or not to make a recommendation for the city of Morro Bay to allow more than cannabis retail operations. Those operations that are allowed under state law include cannabis testing, cannabis manufacturing, and cannabis cultivation. Now, if the city wanted to pursue one or more of those operations, the code could be amended to allow them. And there's a number of routes the city council could take if want, wanting to go down that path. The cannabis subcommittee could be directed to meet again and to come up with some more robust recommendations. Or a report could come back from city staff on what the different options would be. But the cannabis subcommittee, I think wisely thought that it'd be best to take this up to the full council before spending a lot of city resources on it at the present time. There also could be more retail shops permitted. There's only two allowed under the current code. And the standing direction is let's see how these two stores operate, what the revenues are like, go slow on this, and then after that, consider permitting more. But the council certainly can permit more now. And one other idea too, is that although it's relatively new, some cities are allowing what's called cannabis lounges. And this is where an operator who has a retail license from the state of California can actually allow folks to use the product in the store, i.e. it's like a cannabis bar, or they call them cannabis lounges. Given the fact that it's expected, some of the retail sales that the dispensaries will do in Morro Bay will be for tourists, the question has to be asked, where are they going to use the product? You can't smoke in the hotel rooms. So certainly from a revenue side, cannabis lounges make sense. But from a community side, I would leave it to the council on whether or not that would be something we'd want to explore or to just put that on the back burner for a discussion later in time. So two questions for council. One, whether or not the ordinance amendment should be approved. And two, if there's any direction at the present on exploring other cannabis operations. Thank you. And certainly available and open to answer any questions now.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that report. And thank you to the subcommittee for the work that you've done, not only previously, but also with regard to this recommendation at, at this point. Unless the subcommittee members have further questions, obviously you've met and, and gone through a detailed discussion, I'm going to open it up to council member Addis, Heller, and myself to ask questions. But certainly if the, the other two members would like to ask questions, I'll open it up for you as well. So let's go ahead and start with council member Heller. Sir, any questions for Chris?
Yes, Chris, and also Mr. Collins. Can you tell me why the store is not open now and why it's going to be in the five months before it opens? What's the story?
I'm going to have to defer to city staff on that. City attorney's office has not been involved that much in the, the processing of the permits, but there have been some, some delays. I think Mr. Graham might be able to address that.
Yeah, a couple, a couple of issues. Scott Collins, your city manager. One is litigation that's, that's underway by one of the folks, one of the groups that wasn't selected. And the also, the also other issue we were facing is that two of the selected, the two selected permittees unintentionally had their, their preferred locations in close proximity to each other, which is, is not copacetic with our existing ordinance. So there had, there was work that needed to be done to, to find an alternate location for one of the permitting groups. So that, that added a bunch of time. So between those two issues, we are where we are. And also they were in process to begin construction when COVID-19 hit and it sort of changed the trajectory for both of those groups. But we're now in the process of, we've already completed this building permits for one. I think we're just done with the other. There are a series of modifications that need to be done to both the buildings to comply with the rigorous safety requirements outlined by the state, state law that governs cannabis operations. And those are very important. Make sure that they're done correctly. It could be that they'll be done in less time. I think four to five months is probably a more conservative estimate from my, my opinion. Scott probably weigh in on that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Graham?
Yeah, I mean, all the things that Scott said, you know, are tracking with what's taking place. It's also they've been in plan check for a while, you know, you know, putting together the security plan for the, the businesses took a little while as well. There's a lot of back and forth between city staff and, you know, and, and the, and the applicants. I'd let the police chief weigh in on that. He was the primary person, you know, responsible for making sure that the safety plans were in place and, and done correctly and, and for the permits that we issued to cannabis retailers. Other than that, as Scott said, we've issued the, the building permit for one of the applicants and the other one is not far off. They should be getting one probably within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. And then would, if the council decides to go forward with, with the adult-use component, is that going to accelerate or delay the, the permitting and the occupancy timeline? Or will it have any impact at all?
Should have no effect.
It really shouldn't have any impact. Simply put, the cannabis product is artificially separated by the state of California into medical and adult use. But the safety measures for the product, the handling of the product, the cultivation of it, all of that is the exact same. The really, the only difference is at the point of sale, you either produce a medical ID card or you show that you're 21 years of age or older.
Okay. All right. Those are my questions. Thank you, mayor.
Whoops. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Council member Addis, any questions?
If council or-
If council were to move forward wanting to add additional permits, would they be in the same location, or there could be rezoning, or how would that work with locations? And zoning, I guess with zoning is the question. Is it just more permits within the same zoning, or would we also be looking at where they could go?
That's up to council. If the current zoning restrictions are kept in place, allowing one or more permits, they'd only be lawful in the current areas they're allowed. If council wanted to expand or restrict where they're allowed, that's certainly council's prerogative.
That's all my questions.
Okay, thank you. And Chris, thank you for the presentation. Again, thanks to the Subcommittee. My first question is, are there any examples in San Luis Obispo County, or even neighboring counties, of the cannabis lounges that you're aware of?
So from what I have concluded from my research is that this is a relatively new phenomenon that has started in, if you will, the big cities, Los Angeles and San Francisco. And there are not that many off the ground outside of major metropolitan centers. The ability to have a cannabis lounge is just simply a function of the state law on retail establishments says that if the local jurisdiction allows the retailer to allow in-store use, then it's allowed. Most jurisdictions, including Morro Bay expressly under code, say you cannot use the product at the retail establishment. So in short, it's somewhat new. I can definitely bring back a report on what the experience has been in those cities, but it's not widespread yet.
And Chris, are you aware, it appears to me, at least as Mayor, when we were vetting a number of these entities, I toured a couple of establishments, and it appeared to me that vertical integration was a consistent theme with regard to a number of the operators. And in essence, what I'm talking about is not only did they have a retail center, but they were also, some were doing testing, cultivation in close proximity in an indoor lighted facility, and also others were beginning to consider manufacturing. Is this a common trend now for economies of scale? And what have you heard, or what do you see with regard to that?
Yes, absolutely. The dispensaries or retail outlets that operate throughout the state, the owners of those stores obviously would like to generally vertically integrate where they actually are also doing the cultivation and the manufacturing. They create an economy of scale. Testing needs to be firewalled from the other operations, but I would assume that the two retail establishments that will soon open in Morro Bay, they either have an interest in, or simply control the cultivation sites and the manufacturing sites that are bringing their product into the city. So if they could find a location in the city, whether it be a small footprint, or they find a larger one, I would assume that they would be interested in that. If the city was going to look at allowing these other operations, I would suggest one of the first tasks would be to make sure there is some space somewhere to do this. But I will note, the footprint can be pretty small for indoor cultivation and for some of the manufacturing operations.
Thank you. And does, remind me, does our current ordinance that allows for taxation include or anticipate potential future taxation for testing, cultivation, and manufacturing?
Yes, the ordinance as written, the tax ordinance for cannabis approved by the Morro Bay voters in 2016 basically provides for an up to 10% tax on all commercial cannabis activity. So that would include anything that the city could possibly allow. And it also includes, in the alternative for cultivation, up to $25 per square foot. The reason for that is because some cities like to tax the square footage of cultivation, some like to tax the revenues. So when the ordinance was written, I actually wrote it a few years ago, I made sure that it was broad enough where the city doesn't have to keep going back to the drawing board. The tax is sitting there waiting on the shelves, approved by the voters, and would apply to any commercial cannabis activity.
Great, thank you. That's all the questions that I have. I didn't want to leave out Councilmember Addis and McPherson. Did you have any questions? Subcommittee members?
Davis and McPherson, but yes.
I'm sorry, Davis and McPherson. It's getting late.
The only questions that we had really concerned this issue about whether or not there was any space available in Morro Bay, whether it was even feasible to do some of these other activities. And, you know, the answer is, well, we would need to explore that. So that's why we really wanted to have a full council discussion about whether or not it's worth having our staff explore those issues further. So yeah, that was it from me.
Okay. Councilmember Davis, anything to add to that?
I cannot improve upon what Councilmember McPherson said.
Thank you. At least I got the name right this time. All right. With that, Zeke, do we have any public comment? This is, public comment is open for item C-3. Anybody in the queue, sir?
Yes, sir. We have one there. Speaker, you're on. Oh, excuse me. You are now on. Here you go.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
I can now, yes. Welcome.
Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Katie Maplin. I'm the Vice President of Government Affairs and Compliance for Perfect Genian. And we're one of the two cannabis retailers selected in Morro Bay. We have a 10-year history of operating dispensaries and look forward to opening our doors soon. We'd like to express our strong support for a method that will additionally allow adult use sales in the city. It is our experience that most consumers are using our products for some ailment, whether it be for sleep or pain management, but are often burdened by the process of obtaining a medical card. The additional steps and costs can be a hindrance to those people. And we also have personal experience operating a medical location with Marisol, which recently opted to allow adult use sales as well. And in the four-month span since implementation, we now have more than tripled our sales. We would encourage the City of Morro Bay to allow adult use sales to increase access to tested and regulated products and produce tax revenues. Thank you.
Thank you. Zeke, do we have anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, welcome. This is Nick Andre from National Healing Center.
Welcome, Nick.
Thank you. Thank you so much for considering this ordinance amendment in front of you tonight. We're really excited to be working on our project in Morro Bay. Construction has started, and we're hoping to be open as soon as possible here. Just wanted to note a couple things that we saw in Grover Beach when we first opened there. The city originally started as medical, much like Morro Bay. And as soon as the transition occurred into adult use, we saw a 429% increase in sales. That increase in sales was sustained and then saw continued growth from there on out. So the difference between medicinal and adult use sales when it comes to tax revenue to the city is quite significant. Another interesting fact that we found with our patients is that a large percentage of the adult use customers were actually coming in for medicinal reasons, but did not want to visit us when we were only medical. And the reason was very similar to what the previous speaker noted, is that a lot of the folks did not feel comfortable going through the medical process and getting a medical card, particularly among the 55-plus age group, is what we found. And so we saw a significant increase in people visiting the store for medical reasons when it went adult use. So it's a little bit counterintuitive. I just want to also note that the city attorney's figures for Grover Beach, I think that Grover Beach was maybe being a little conservative in their estimates, because I think if all things hold steady, especially with the increase in sales we've seen under COVID-19, and when you incorporate the portion of the sales tax that the cities get, and business licensing fees and all that, NHC is on track to provide over $1 million in annual revenues to the City of Grover Beach alone. So very significant amount of business that's happening, and it just shows how much opportunity there is in this industry for the different cities. I do think that this is going to be a great opportunity to provide additional tax revenue during COVID-19. As I noted before, this is essential service. We've seen a significant increase in the number of people visiting the stores and the amount that people are spending. But in addition to those revenues, you know, we're also providing greater access to medicine that improves people's lives. A couple other notes on some comments that were made about cannabis lounges. We are actually opening up the first cannabis lounge in the Central Valley out in Lemoore. That store will be open in July, and so we welcome all of you to come take a visit. The cannabis lounge is attached to our retail store there, although it is sort of like a separate area. So, you know, it's not like people are smoking in the same areas where people are shopping and all that. So definitely an opportunity for the council to get educated if they wish to come out and take a look at that. We're generally also supportive of other uses within the city to create a stronger local supply chain, but definitely urge caution on the additional storefronts due to the significant cost of compliance and cost of doing business on these businesses this year. So looking at the ratios of--
Thank you, Nick. That's your three minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Zeke, is there another caller?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Next caller, please.
Hi, it's Melanie Blains-Mahan again. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi. I just think it's kind of interesting that we shut down vapes for local purchase and put some stores in really hard times, and some went out of business, to protect the children. So now a 21-year-old will be able to purchase legal weed with no card, including vapes. And the kids that stole from their parents, sold their parents' vapes, can steal the older siblings' vapes. It's very mixed messages here. And if you control the pot smokers like you did the tourists last weekend, you might as well give it up now. We'll be the county smoke hole. It's really easy enough to get a medical marijuana card. If you have a phone or a computer, you can get a card for about 20 bucks. If you don't have a card, go to Grover Beach. Morro Bay can't handle recreational right now. I would like to know what the Morro Bay Police Department's thoughts are on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Zeke, anybody else?
Yes, sir. Next caller, please.
Yes, citizens, honorable mayor, and council and staff. My name is John Weiss and a business owner and also a homeowner. I don't happen to be a consumer of this product. I know my brother is, and I also know that he goes to Grover Beach. But it is legal, and while it's legal, I think we should do what we can to maximize revenue. We are in a pandemic, and we do need added revenue to make city staff's job hopefully easier by having greater revenue. And given that it sounds like the committee, which was enumerated earlier, supported it, I think it's a kind of a no-brainer to increase the revenue. And I don't say that based on my own personal use or opinion, but because it is legal and because it will increase revenue in the city. And if I understand the comments of the individuals who actually own businesses, it sounds like it's a significant increase. And I like to make it easy for us to increase revenue in the city and make it legal. I do think it's important that we have whatever security provisions are required that the Police Chief mentioned. I do understand Melanie's concern on the vape, which can be purchased online. So I don't know that we necessarily made the best decision there, but I do think we should have a level playing field in regard to that. But that's another issue altogether. But I would support C-3 as proposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, Zeke?
We have nobody else in the queue with their hands raised.
Okay. With that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. I'll start with our Subcommittee members, Councilmember McPherson or Davis. I know you, we have recommendations of any further discussion or recommendations you'd like to make at this time.
Well, if Red doesn't go, I'll go. I just wanted to explain our reasoning and rationale. And as I say, we met with the Police Chief and the Fire Chief and the Community Development Director and City Managers. So we had a lot of the people that would be impacted by this decision in the room with us, or not in the room, but discussed it. And we felt that it only made sense to authorize the two already licensed medical stores. First of all, Morro Bay voters approved adult use by a higher proportion of support than California as a whole. And if I remember correctly, it was 69% supported adult use in Morro Bay compared to 67% for the statewide average, but don't quote me on that. So we need the sources of revenue, and so we really felt that we should just get up and get running and just add those two stores. We felt that the cannabis lounges maybe wouldn't be a good fit for Morro Bay citizens, but probably too soon to consider that, but we'd like to see this get moved quickly. And then we wanted to hear the opinions of the other council members on testing and cultivation and manufacturing. Before we wanted to authorize staff to do more work on it. So that's our reasoning for how we came up with the recommendation.
And thank you for that. Councilmember Davis, anything to add?
No, Marlis described our process very thoroughly. And, yeah, and I did want to emphasize that we had Chief Knuckles and Chief Cox and Director Graham on board with us the whole way. So I would be ready to go ahead and move recommendation number one, that we introduce for first reading by title only and with further reading waived, ordinance number 633, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, California, amending chapter 5.50, Commercial Cannabis Operations Regulatory Program of Title V of the Morro Bay Municipal Code to permit certain adult use, commercial cannabis uses, retail sales, deliveries, and wholesale distributor, and to authorize Community Development Director to issue administrative regulations.
And I second that motion.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Davis for the recommendation number one of the staff recommendation, and a second by Councilmember McPherson. And we'll take this separately. So any further discussion on that?
Yeah, I have a few comments, if I may.
Yes, Councilmember Heller, go ahead.
I, you know, I agree with one of the callers that the medical card is easy and has been easy since the outset to get. So I don't agree with the callers that it's really difficult and people can't have access to this product because they can't get the card. No one has ever told me that. I just don't believe that at all. And I'm kind of, I'm a little wary of this when you look at the substance abuse problems we have in this town, and I know a lot of people say they're not related, but in my mind, they are related. And I have kind of a go-slow approach. I think the medical is fine. Let's give that a try. That was our initial direction, and I support that direction. We're as desperate as we are for revenue. I think this kind of thing going forward with adult use could turn the city into a place that not all of us may want to live in as much as we do now. So I'm on the go-slow page on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis?
Yeah, I'm supportive of this moving forward with permitting the two.
I too am supportive. The voters have spoken. We have a legal industry that is very tightly controlled by the Department of Consumer Affairs. I do understand concerns about safety, but I also am familiar with the process that staff has undertaken to ensure that this will be not only safe, but will operate within the confines of the state regulations. And so with that, I will support that recommendation from our Subcommittee and ask for a roll-call vote.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
I'm staying.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes. And with that, oh, go ahead and read the outcome, sorry. And with that, oh, go ahead and read the outcome, sorry.
Motion carried 311.
Thank you. That brings us to just a general discussion and providing a direction to staff on authorizing other commercial cannabis operations in the city of Morro Bay. Not primarily because there is a need for revenue, although there is a significant need for increased revenue in the city of Morro Bay. And we've just voted to limit the expansion of retail sales to just two entities that by proximity are separated significantly across the city. I'm from the industry learning that more and more vertical integration is becoming a business model that is common, which includes not only the regular sales of the product itself, but also cultivation and manufacturing, which also can occur at times on the same site. The testing, as I think Chris has mentioned, does require some somewhat of a different model that may not be so easily integrated. But I think from an economic diversification standpoint, this city needs to look at opportunities that are not only legal, but well-controlled by the state as well as well-defined by local ordinances to expand revenues, and we need to do that as quickly as possible. So I would be supportive of having staff bring back information on the feasibility of creating opportunities for testing, cultivation, and manufacturing in the city. And let me start with Councilmember Heller, and then we'll move on from there.
No questions, thanks.
Any comments on that? Those actually comments.
Oh, sorry, no comments.
Okay. Councilmember Davis?
Yes, I agree 100% Mayor. I think that we need the revenue. It is a tightly controlled market. It is working in other localities, producing great revenue for cities. The, as Chris has pointed out, cultivation can be done with a small footprint. And I know that we have buildings in this city, vacant buildings in this city that could be used for cultivation. Testing is, has tiny impact. It can be done in someone's home. Nobody even knows it's going on. Manufacturing, I'd like to take a look at that because I know that often it involves dangerous chemicals, and certainly Chief Knuckles would have to weigh in on the feasibility of that. But again, something I think we should look at and investigate. And thank you for taking the leadership on that.
Certainly. And Councilmember McPherson?
Yes, I support your comments, Mr. Mayor. And I do think it's worth looking at more closely to see if it is feasible in our city and if there's interest from existing businesses to do something like that. I think it's worth a next step, and I would be happy as a subcommittee member to participate in that.
Great. And Councilmember Addis, any comments on that?
Yes, I want to thank the subcommittee for saying they'd be willing to research this, and I would be supportive of hearing the information and having that come back to council.
Great. Well, thank you all for weighing in on the questions that were asked about the other opportunities for the city. Staff, for Chris, do you feel you have enough direction to move forward with bringing back information in the future regarding that?
Yes.
Great. Okay. With that, that ends item C3, brings us to item D, Council Declaration of Future Agenda Items. Councilmember Heller, any--
I would like to suggest as a possible future agenda item that we discuss options on how we can get some of that WRF money back into the hands of Morro Bay residents because of general discussion about what we could possibly do to make that happen.
For myself, could you clarify, get some of that WRF money back into the hands? Not sure what you mean, sir. Sorry.
That's one of the clearest things I've said all night, actually.
Harbor leases or what? No, just kidding.
Well, it seems to me there's some opportunities here. We've kind of briefly touched on them. We touched on them briefly when the instruction management contract came before the council, where I asked, you know, how many people on your company live in Morro Bay? There's also the issue of all the program management team and all their subconsultants. We're, in one sense, we're in a fairly strong negotiating position, I think, to talk with some of the consultants who've served the city about increasing the percentage of people on their payroll that live here. And I'd like to see that discussed, or if it doesn't need to come back to council and the city manager will just implement that, I'm fine with that, too. But it's hard to watch these millions of dollars leaving not only the city, but also in many cases, the county. When we have people laid off, when we have people struggling to pay their bills. So I think there's some opportunities here that we should pursue.
Is that in addition to the local hire language we just passed?
I'm talking about professional services only.
Professional services only, okay. I guess it lacks specificity for me. I'm not sure.
All their subconsultants, every outside consultant that we hire that provides services to the city.
And--
Maybe that's why we need the discussion so we can talk about--
Well, I guess I can't support--
What else, what else, what don't you understand?
I don't understand exactly what you want, what you're trying to say. Are you talking, you'd like to agendize the hiring within Corolo of more local people? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, it doesn't have to be that specific. I think what I'm looking for is, does the council want to set a policy that we need to be proactive in talking with our consultants routinely about how they can increase the folks that they hire, increase the percentage that are residents of Morro Bay?
Chris, can you weigh in on local hire kinds of language for general city hires or consultants?
Let me just say one more, one more thing just to try and clarify this. As an owner who hire, can hire professional services, we can at any time renegotiate those contracts. And I'm suggesting that we look at that option with respect to trying to increase the percentage of people who are living here that will be on the payrolls. Is that any more clear? Does anyone understand what I'm talking about, or is it too late?
Well, I guess I don't support it because it's not developed enough for me.
I do not support it. I just want to make sure people understand what I'm saying.
Is there any other discussion?
Whether there's any support.
Well, you're, this is a future agenda item. You're asking to put it on the agenda. I'm saying I don't support it.
That's fine. I just want, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. I'm just asking the other council members to weigh in. Is there any support for that?
I don't support it, but you know, it seems to me the appropriate time to consider that is when there's a contract that comes before us. And if we want to have a local preference, the time to do that is when we write a contract so that it's clear. And I don't think it needs to be a separate discussion, but it should come up when contracts come up.
So, yeah, I don't want to get too much into discussing the issue as an agenda item because it's not agendized, so--
I don't--
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Davis, any comment?
No, I thought it was already city policy that we encourage local hiring.
Okay. And Councilmember Addis?
Well, I think we went through this before, and council majority made a very clear decision about local hire by putting it into contract language as opposed to other options that were on the table at the time. I thought Councilmember Heller specifically supported the option that we have before us that we're moving forward with. So I don't see a need to revisit this. I think we've, I think we've done what we can do unless we're going to bring, you know, some other kind of labor agreement back. But I don't see, you know, going piece by piece and looking through, you know, Corolo's employment policies or whatever. So I don't, I don't think I support it in that fashion.
Okay.
I think if we were going to, if Councilmember Heller wanted to bring like a citywide project labor agreement forward or something along those lines, that would actually have more teeth to it. I could see supporting a conversation around that.
Okay, great. So that has no support. Any other future agenda items?
John, can I weigh in real quick?
You sure can.
Yeah, just to note that, you know, the Corolo contract, you know, it's an annual renewal process, and that's coming to council soon. So we certainly could consider that as part of the negotiation. And I think to Mr. Heller's point, we're certainly looking at everything we do with that lens right now, especially in light of COVID-19. And that was part of the emergency order that council approved regarding purchasing and trying to do as much locally as possible. So I think that's sort of guiding our approach to everything right this time.
Good. Thank you. Thank you for that. Appreciate the clarification.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate that as well. Other future agenda items?
Yes, I would like to ask staff to bring us recommendations for temporary use of city right-of-way to facilitate social distancing and support COVID-19 economic recovery, similar to what Slow City did last Friday.
I support that.
Yeah, I support it as well.
I can support that.
Not sure.
Okay. So it sounds like we have support for that.
I have one more.
Yes.
At our special council meeting on May 14th, we considered a draft ordinance regarding face masks. And at that time, we had only three council members present for the discussion and the vote. I would like to bring that back for a full council discussion.
So thank you for mentioning that. I was one of the three, and I would support that highly.
I don't support it.
I support that.
Okay, we have three supports.
I was not present at that meeting, so I'd be happy to discuss it.
Okay. Got support for that. Anything else?
Mayor, if I could inquire concerning a face mask agenda item, would the council majority like to have a report on options or actually have a draft ordinance presented?
My preference would be a draft ordinance, but I'll see if that's okay with Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. That would save time and effort. Everybody else okay that was behind that?
I support that.
Okay.
I guess I'm a little unclear on what the content of the ordinance would be.
So--
I would kind of like to discuss it before we have him, before we have Chris go to the trouble of writing an ordinance in terms of the specifics of what we would want to see included in it.
Chris, you might just elaborate slightly on what you have seen with regard to other cities.
So in regards to a future council agenda item, the possibility of having an ordinance brought forward, a draft ordinance, it would basically provide for a requirement that a mask needs to be worn in certain circumstances. And then the council would decide in what circumstances it needs to be worn. If there, if it doesn't get too complicated, we could, we can fill in the blanks, if you will, on the floor, you know, with a, with a draft ordinance. You know, some of the other issues would be who enforces it, what the penalties are, et cetera. But in short, cities that have passed these ordinances have required either masks everywhere and all the time, like city of Los Angeles, as opposed to most cities that do it required only when you can't socially distance. So in regards to a future agenda item, in addition to a report on what other cities are doing and different options, there could be a draft ordinance, which certainly wouldn't be in final form, but the idea would be if council wanted to, they could fill in the blanks that night and perhaps do a first reading. Or we could have a discussion and get clear direction on whether we even want to bring back an ordinance or not, and that's entirely up to council.
What's the timing on if, you know, you bring options and then you come back with first reading and a second reading? When would we, if council were to move forward, when would that be?
I think that a report can be brought at the next meeting, and then if there wasn't the request for an ordinance, we could bring that back for our first reading at the following meeting, if that was the council's desire. We also could do a special meeting on it as well. We have, you know, had the special meeting before on COVID. But something like this, you know, it will be turned around quickly if council would like it to be done. If council believes this is a public health emergency, then, you know, it will be done quickly, but it's at the direction of council.
Councilmember McPherson, my rationale for bringing a menu, ordinance for the menu of options to consider was timing. We would be looking at a minimum of, if we had discussion, first reading, second reading of six weeks before anything got implemented.
I'm okay with the idea of a menu of options. I didn't want to see a full-blown ordinance before we'd even talked about how we wanted to regulate wearing masks. So that's, that's fine if we have a menu.
Okay, so it sounds like we have support for that methodology.
Okay, I will bring back a report with a menu and discussion items on what other cities are not doing, and then seek direction on whether or not to prepare an ordinance after that meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
We do have a number of other items on the agenda, so that we've just added three, unless there's anything extremely pressing for future items.
I know Councilmember Davis nominated me to be the, maybe he can say it, at the beginning of the meeting, and you suggested he wait till the end. But I would like to--
Oh, right, right.
--the point person for the, we are the Care, Early Childcare Initiative, or I can't remember exactly what he said.
Yes.
Wait, and I'm losing the wording now.
Yes. It was Chris Rodabush from the Care Initiative, who was reminding of the importance of childcare and the shortage of childcare facilities in this county. And she was asking council to appoint a liaison to her organization. And it occurred to me that Councilmember Addis has special interests in young people, and I wanted to nominate her, ask her if she would be willing by way of nominating her to do it.
Chris, that would have to be agendized, would it not, and approved?
Yeah, that should be agendized for council discussion and action. And also on that note, I think we should check with the city manager, city clerk, on what the agenda looks like in two weeks, insofar as if we bring a face mask discussion item, what that's looking like in terms of logistics, and also if we're going to bring a discussion item on appointment for child liaison.
Might I suggest that it could go on consent from the perspective that childcare is a critical issue in our county, and it's going to be especially critical in the fall if schools are not in session and daycares are not in, you know, preschools are not in session, that families who may otherwise be able to go back to work but don't have childcare may not be able to get back to work. And given the unemployment rate across our county and in our own city, that focusing on childcare is going to be critical for us.
Scott, I'll let you weigh in. I know we are, we have budget discussions, which are-- I know we are, we have budget discussions, which are a very heavy agenda item coming up and a number of other things. Mr. Collins, are you with us?
Yeah, sorry, Cap. Mayor Heding, I stepped out for a second. What was the question? My apologies.
If we could do that on consent was my question, not make it a full-blown agenda, you know?
As far as the appointment is concerned?
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know how much, what your duties would be and any of that stuff. So that would require some, some outreach to the group. So I, I don't know how pressing it is. If that's the case, you know, maybe, maybe a couple of meetings to bring it back. Just given that we're trying to bring the budget forward and a bunch of other initiatives this time. That's okay with council. That would probably be.
Is it acceptable for meeting after next?
It is to me. Sorry, I'm nodding.
Okay, good. So we have agreement and we'll bring it back, meeting after next.
And in regards to a face mask discussion item, I just thought it'd be useful to get the city manager's feedback on logistics, on putting that on the next agenda and whether we might need to continue something else out. I just know that we have the policy of when we add new stuff, we consider what's on it because the agenda's been planned out for quite a ways out, so.
Correct. You, you know, if, if, it's hard to say right now, you know, Chris, I didn't know there's a number of items, including the budget, that, and other issues of pressing that were probably slated for the ninth of June. So I think I'd have to take that under kind of consideration at this time. I, I would recommend that, I know it's been discussed, I'd recommend that ordinance come forward because it will take several months to be implemented. And if, if there's a first discussion and then it has to go to a first reading in the next meeting, you, you won't have a mask ordinance if that's the overall desire of the council until midsummer or later. So that's just my suggestion. But I'd have to check in with, with Dana and look at our, our planned agendas for the next couple of meetings to see where we can slot that in.
So Scott, when we meet on the agenda, we'll, we'll prioritize that as we can based upon staff availability.
Okay.
Because I know it's impacted fairly significantly.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, it sounds like the attorney would do, would do the work on it. So I don't think that's the issue. It's just going to be a matter of how it fits with the other items. So we certainly can move things around. So we, we will, we'll aim for the, the first meeting in June.
Great. Okay. With that, we'll adjourn. The next regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, June 9th, 2020, 5:30 PM via teleconference. Be safe and be well and good evening. Thank you all.
Good night, everybody.
You.
Thank you.
Have a bed.